Good evening. I'm Mayor Dean Brooke, and I'd like to welcome you to this October 20th, 2020 regular meeting of Durango City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councillor Batine.
Here.
Councillor Noseworthy.
Present.
Councillor Youssef.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter. And Mayor Brooke.
Here. Thank you so much. With that, I need to ask for any identification of actual or perceived conflicts of interest that councillors may have with regard to any particular topic on tonight's agenda.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from the agenda item that's dealing with code changes later on in the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Batine. Well, it's easy virtually. You can just mute out, and then there you go. Thank you so much. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you so much. With that noted, we will move on to public participation. And I'd just like to, in our new virtual format, I'd just like to say we do like, we welcome public participation. To keep the meeting moving along, we are limiting comments to three minutes. We do that by keeping an eye on our monitor, and the video feed will show the time remaining. In order to, if you're listening in, either by phone or on this, on the internet, please use the raise hand function, or if you're using the Zoom app, to indicate that you would like to provide a comment. If you called into the meeting using the telephone, press star nine to raise your hand. Our moderator will announce the next person to speak, and we'll ask you to unmute yourself at that time. I would like to remind everyone to be civil in this public forum. We encourage everyone to express their views and opinions, but ask that you do so in a respectful manner, free of explicit or derogatory language. To begin, please state your first and last name and your home address for the record. With that, can we invite our first participant?
Yes, Mayor, I do see that we have someone who has raised their hand.
Excellent.
Jerry Harris. I've invited you to speak, so please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Harris, 11 Durango on Rock Point Drive. I would like to read for your consideration comments that I just presented at the Board of County Commissioners meeting regarding their proposed 2021 budget. Although the budget is a county matter, my comments affect the city also. Here is what I said to the county. I would like to comment on your proposal to spend $1 million for remodeling the De Nier Building. Once remodeling is completed, the plan is for De Nier to replace Hilltop House as the county's adult rehabilitation center. Remodeling is said to be necessary because Hilltop House has about 54 beds, which is reportedly almost always occupied, but De Nier has only 28 beds. What doesn't make sense about this proposal is that Hilltop House is working quite well, so why spend $1 million to remodel a space so that it will be essentially equivalent to something that already exists and works? The only expressed reason I've heard is that soon the county will be responsible for contracting community corrections. Therefore, the argument goes, the county should own the property where a community corrections facility is located, and Hilltop House is on city property, whereas De Nier is on county property. Although that argument possibly has merit, it seems like a rather weak reason for spending $1 million when a much simpler approach exists. The county should work with the city to transfer ownership of the Hilltop House land to the county. Some type of creative land swap arrangement of Hilltop House for De Nier makes sense, and there would be an added and much-needed benefit to such an agreement. I don't have to describe the years-long city and county quagmire of finding a site for a supervised, I'm not talking Purple Cliffs, a supervised transitional homeless camper shelter. A city-controlled De Nier center by whatever mechanism would solve that problem. On October 8th, I sent the county and city leaders an email with some thoughts about this proposed swap, including a possible outside source for funding of renovations at De Nier targeted for homeless use. I hope you've had time to read that email, but for now, I'll just say that to casually or uncritically characterize De Nier as being unsuitable for homeless services seems very short-sighted and unresponsive to community needs, especially given the travails over the past few years as described in the January 2020 PATH report on homelessness. As a final comment, please recall that the recently circulated petition opposing a homeless camp near Greenmount also went on to, and I quote, "urge the city to work with the county to consider the De Nier Center," unquote. The petition continued by listing some advantages of De Nier that would meet the needs of our unhoused population. It had over 800 signers. Those of us local taxpaying residents who favor this use of De Nier see it not only as a physically responsible way to save the $1 million, but also as a workable, straightforward, and compassionate approach to addressing a problem that has challenged not only our communities, but cities across the country. Thank you for your time.
If you are here to speak during public participation, now is your chance. Please use the raise hand function. Mayor, I have not seen anybody else raise their hand. Oh, Mayor, you are muted. And actually, just, just as I said that, someone else raised their hand.
I knew we'd give them time, and that's wonderful. Yeah, invite them in if you would.
Dan Corman. I've invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Dan Corman, 513 East 30th. And I'm calling in to discuss the vacation rental permit changes that are on the docket. Just wanted to be clear from someone who's in the industry that further restrictions is probably not the answer to helping some of the people that are interested in this. I am not for speculative vacation rental purchases. I don't think that people necessarily should be buying property, renting them out nightly, and it's a free-for-all. I believe that the way Durango has handled the vacation rental permitting process has been amazing, and I think it's been working. And to further limit the permitting and increase some of the, and I apologize for not being able to speak exactly to the changes. I kind of got on last minute here, but wanted to, to give an idea, rather than creating more restrictions, I think utilizing your, your power to help residents gain income from their properties that are increasing in price by 50% and limiting the limited inventory is creating problems for your constituents. So, so instead of limiting, allow people to actually utilize their property as sort of the American dream. EN3 is Anima City, and, and it's the only zone within the city limits here that does not allow vacation rental permits. EN1 and EN2 have very good permitting processes in place. EN3 does not, whereas we have wider streets, we have bigger lots, and to rent out a room in your home is a great way to leverage the cost of your mortgage payment. To reduce people's abilities to utilize their homes the way they want, it just further exacerbates government's overbearing control on our rights to homeownership. And so, you know, as somebody who's in the industry every day, I see it hurting people, especially when you add some of these restrictions to the existing ones that are in place. So, I hope that you take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Corman. And yeah, and anybody else that does have a testimony regarding that specific topic, we will have a public hearing a little later this evening, and that would be appropriate time to feed, feedback into, into that particular topic. And we appreciate it. We can add your comments, Mr. Corman, to that public hearing. The, any other public participants this evening?
If, if anybody in the audience is here to speak during public participation, please raise your hand.
Okay, Mitchell, I think we move on to item 5.1, which is a presentation, which is the generically proclamations and presentations portion of our meeting, but we have a presentation this evening by Commander Dunlap and Sergeant Dixon regarding Agenda Item 6.8, and they can fill us in on what that's all about. Mr. Dixon?
Hi, I'm Sergeant Dixon, Tim Dixon. I'm the Community Programs Sergeant for the Durango Police Department, and want to thank you for allowing me to make a brief presentation. I'm here to talk to you about a grant that the police department is applying for in support of an important new program that we plan on implementing, and it's called the Core Team. Chief Brammer, I know, has already talked to council about the Core Program, which teams a specially-trained police officer with a mental health professional. The Core Team will address calls for service and on-view incidents related to people in crisis from one of the following statuses. And Mitchell, we should be on, I think, Slide 1, the program, not the intro, but Slide 1 on the PowerPoint. So, the, the second one from the intro, there we go. This will be a joint venture between the Durango Police Department and Axis Mental Health. And again, a two-person team, sworn officer with CIT training, which is Crisis Intervention Team, and a mental health clinician. And the team will respond to people in crisis because of any combination of the following three statuses: suffering from mentally, mental illness, affected by a substance abuse problem, or experiencing homelessness. And we believe that these calls make up 10% or more of our total call load with the police department. The program has the following goals. Number one is to connect the people in crisis with the appropriate assistance or resources they need to reduce the number of calls for service attributed to frequent consumers. And an example of that is our officers will handle calls, multiple calls in a day or even a shift, dealing with the same individual or group of individuals. And then the third of the, of the goals is allow Durango police officers to focus on their primary duties, which would be crime and crime prevention, and let mental health professionals address the problems that are more in their wheelhouse. So let's talk about the grant a little bit, and we can go to the next slide. The grant is from the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, or DOLA, and the name of the grant is the Peace Officer Mental Health Support Grant Program. And the purpose of the grant program is to provide financial assistance to law enforcement agencies who provide the following, and these items are on-scene response services to support peace officers handling of persons with mental health disorders. So, any call that has that nexus to mental health disorders. And another item that is a purpose of the grant is counseling services to peace officers. We have a peer support program for police officers here at the Durango Police Department, and funds from the grant can be used to support that program. So what we are seeking to fund with the grant, and we can go to the third slide now, is funding for a Core Team response vehicle. The Core Team can respond to calls. It can also handle on-view calls, but it needs a vehicle, and that vehicle needs to not look like a traditional police car. And in following the model of a few other agencies in the state, Montrose being one, Grand Junction PD being another, they have elected to use a minivan. In our case, we're, we're looking at a Chrysler Pacifica, which is all-wheel-drive, but it has a safe location for the driver and passenger, being the mental health professional. Also, in the backseat area, a place where they could transport a person who is in crisis, or even pull them out of the weather and counsel them if that's what they need to do. There would be partitions similar to what we have in a police car, and some other equipment, like a CAD system, a police radio system. The total cost of that vehicle, including the vehicle and all the equipment, is $57,973. But then additionally, we are seeking $1,000 from this grant to fund training and professional services for our Durango PD Peer Support Program. And, and the Peer Support Program provides confidential, emotional support for Durango PD employees in times of personal or professional crisis. So that is our presentation. Does anyone have questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Is the, is the vehicle a electric vehicle or a hybrid?
I don't believe so. I believe it's a gas-powered vehicle, but I think that is something that we could ask for.
It would be great, because that is, would be keeping even more in line with our city council goals, sustainable energy use. So it'd be wonderful if you could figure out how that might work.
Mayor Pro Tim, if I can cut in real quick. Commander Dunlap with the Durango Police Department. Thank you for taking the time to listen to this today. I do know that the Chrysler Pacifica is capable of being a hybrid vehicle. I know that Tom Kramer worked with us to get the quote on this, and I'm not sure if we put that in there, but we can definitely see how much that changes the, the estimates for it.
I was going to raise that same question, because I too have been eager for the day when we start converting our fleet. So I would really like to see some kind of electric vehicle component.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to, to Tom tomorrow and see if we can get an updated quote for a hybrid model versus a standard gas.
So I would just wanted to add, thank you so much for the presentation and information. This is really great news to hear that we're applying for this grant. What's the timeline on this? Because, you know, getting this type of mental health support in place in conjunction with our police department would be such a wonderful asset for our community. So what's our kind of timeline? And what might that look like? Will, will it reside underneath the DPD? How does that partnership look?
So, Councillor Youssef, we're looking at this as a budgetary item moving into this next budget cycle. So we're working feverishly right now with Axis Mental Health to develop some policies, guidelines, to see exactly what kind of personnel we need to hire, to recruit, and to, and to train prior to January 1 coming about. So we're looking at some specific timelines, and obviously, you know, they're creeping up on us pretty quickly. So Sergeant Dixon and I are having those meetings currently as we speak with both Shelley Burke and with the other staff members out there. So right now, we're looking at hiring two specially-trained people that are employed by Axis that we will provide contract services to, and then they will team up with our officers. We've looked at some hot times through our scheduling based off of the types of calls that we're seeing, and we believe that we can do seven-day service, and it'll be during specific times, really kind of looking about 10:00 in the morning till about 8:00 in the evening. And so we should build overlap of shifts a little bit, and we can make the adjustments based off the seasons, too, depending on what those, those fluctuations occur. And so again, right now, we're looking at also some ride-along programs. So if they do have some interested people, or whoever their oversight program director is going to be for Axis Mental Health, so they can roll out with some of our CIT officers and kind of get a feel for what some of the calls will be, look like, and what some of the service demands are going to be, then we might be able to get an additional jumpstart on that as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much. It's great to hear an update on this.
Councillor Youssef, if I can jump in on that as well. I think the implementation is going to be pretty rapid on this. We've got a lot of great programs that we can emulate with Grand Junction PD having some similar Eugene as well. And Sergeant Dixon handles our Crisis Intervention Team training, and a lot of our officers here at the police department have already been trained in working with people who are experiencing crisis in their life. And so we're, we're all on the same page with most of this. And so I think one of the biggest challenges is getting all the funding lined up. And once we have that, we'll be able to start getting people out on the street pretty quickly, and then working out the kinks in the system and adapting it to our local community.
It's great that you're looking at some of the other programs. I know, I believe the name of the one in Eugene, what might have been called Kahoots or something?
Yeah.
Correct.
We've got to build up to that. The response team is, is kind of a first step to get to that point.
Yeah, I remember they started with one van as well, and they're up to, I don't know how many now. It's a good number.
Yep. Thank you.
Our, our ultimate goal is to go to what we're referring to as a care model, and that would be very similar to the Kahoots program, more independent.
Excellent. I just want to thank you and for the public to know. I mean, this is our response to not necessarily unfund the police, but certainly unburden the, the, the need to have police interaction in those non-criminal and non-violent interactions, and supplement that with a more appropriate mental health interaction, and, and allow our police department to do better policing and less interaction with those folks in of our community that don't need to be, have their first interaction be legal interaction, but be more of assistance. So I really applaud you guys for taking, responding to the needs of, of our community, and this looks like a great program, and we might even get you an electric car. So that's to boot.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You bet. Thanks so much.
I'll make a point that in 2021, there'll be some new electric vans coming out, all-electric.
Yeah. Well, thanks again for your presentation, and, and look forward to seeing, seeing how this all works out, and hopefully it reduces your workload and gets you on to better policing, what you're trained to do. Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is for those items of either routine or non-controversial in nature, and we will have a reading of the consent agenda, followed by any councillors that would like to remove an item from, from the consent agenda for further consideration. And so with that, Amy, can I ask you to have a reading of the consent agenda?
Certainly. So Items 6.1 through 6.4 are approval of minutes. 6.1, the minutes from the September 8th, 2020 study session. 6.2, the minutes from the October 1st, 2020 Joint City Council County Commissioner Meeting. 6.3, the minutes from the October 6th, 2020 Special City Council Meeting. And 6.4, the minutes from the October 6th, 2020 Regular City Council Meeting. Items 6.5 through 6.9 are discussion and possible action items. 6.5 concerns resolution R.2020-37 authorizing an additional appropriation of CARES Act funding to the Transportation Services Fund. 6.6 concerns resolution R.2020-38 authorizing an additional appropriation of CARES Act funding to the Airport Enterprise Fund. 6.7 concerns resolution R.2020-39 authorizing an additional appropriation of the revitalizing Main Street grant funding to the General Fund. 6.8 considers, concerns the submission of a Colorado Department of Local Affairs Peace Officer Mental Health Support Grant Application for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. 6.9 concerns resolution R.2020-40 authorizing an additional appropriation of EMPG Special Project Related to COVID-19 Response and Recovery Grant to the General Fund. Item 6.10 is a request for public hearing for the Valhalla Comprehensive Plan Amendment with a proposed date of Monday, November 2nd, 2020. Item 6.11 and 6.12, or 12 are final approval of ordinances. 6.11 is Ordinance O.2020-13 vacating and abandoning a portion of the public right-of-way on East Second Avenue and declaring an effective date. 6.12 is Ordinance O.2020-14 for the purposes of amending the zoning of real property located within the city of Durango, Colorado pursuant to Chapter 27, Section 6-3-2-3, and 2-1-2-6 of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Durango, and declaring an effective date, and that's the Larkin Rezone.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Well done. Is there, I asked for any councillors that would like to remove an item that is currently on the consent agenda? Hearing none. If I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter.
Yes.
Councillor Batine.
Yes, yes.
Councillor Noseworthy.
Yes.
Councillor Youssef.
Yes.
Mayor Brooke.
Yes. Thank you so much. And with that, we move into our public hearings. Item 9.1 is Legislative and Policy-Related Hearing, which is a public hearing to consider amendments to Sections 2-2-3-4 and 2-1-3-3 of the Land Use and Development Code Vacation Rental Homes. And I understood that Mr. Councillor Batine was going to recuse himself. So with that, Chris, hopefully you can rejoin us. But if not, we'll, we'll, we'll see you soon. At any rate, we'll, we can officially, I think, on our virtual mode, I think our moderator actually cancels Chris out of the, causes you to leave electronically, and so there's no intervention. Thanks so much. And so can we have a staff update, the presentation of this particular topic?
Yeah, bear with me one second here, Mayor. Share my screen. Okay, are we seeing what I'm seeing here?
Good to go, Dan. You bet.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. My name's Dan Armento. I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. This is a public hearing to consider amendments to our vacation rental standards in the LEDC, and I've got Scott Shine with us here, and he's going to kind of intro these, so I will pass it off to Scott.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Brooke, members of the council. Scott Shine, I'm the Planning Manager for the City of Durango, and I'll give a brief introduction, and then Dan will really cover the details of the presentation tonight. So the proposal before use to consider amendments to the Land Use and Development Code, the section that governs vacation rentals and makes up our almost seven-year-old now vacation rental program. The proposed amendments were drafted by staff in response to an action item listed in the 2018 Housing Plan that you all were involved in reviewing and adopting, and And staff took that direction and crafted these amendments. We then presented it to the Code Alignment Working Group, which is made up of a variety of board and commission members from Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustments, the Design Review Board. They reviewed the proposed amendments, made a few minor adjustments and recommended that we advance those to Planning Commission as required by the LEDC for any text amendments. Planning Commission reviewed it, made a couple of changes. And on their September 28th, at their September 28th meeting, they unanimously recommended approval of the amendments that are before you tonight. So there's been a long process developing these adjustments to the vacation rental program. And following the final draft of the amendments, we sent it out to all the vacation rental management companies that we interact with regularly, all the permittees and made sure they were aware that the changes were coming. We did get some inquiries and we got, you know, some formal public comments that you have seen. And in response to that, we have a couple of minor revisions that we're going to show you tonight. Doesn't change the content of the recommendations, but really just brings clarity to the intent of the amendments. So we think those are helpful. And we appreciate those vacation rental stakeholders and giving us some feedback so that we can make these as clear as possible. So it's before you tonight for final consideration. And I thought just as we jumped in, it'd be helpful to review the history of the program as you consider these specific amendments. And many of you will remember the process we went through to create the vacation rental program in 2014. There was a lot of public input, many meetings, different perspectives on how Durango should manage short term rentals. And it was really, you know, along with the boom and Airbnb and VRBO was really ramping up and becoming more popular. And we really sought to, in the design of the program, minimize the impacts of these short term and more transient rentals on the overall housing market and also on the, you know, the exceptional quality of life that Durango residents enjoy in our residential neighborhood. So we were sort of trying to accomplish these different goals. And we feel like we've been really successful in having a program that accomplishes those things. We allow them in certain areas where it seems appropriate. And we either do not allow them at all or else cap them in neighborhoods where they could have a more dramatic impact. So we've really been pioneers and the program has really been recognized across the state and nationally as a model for other communities who want to try and balance these competing demands. The other thing is that we've been on the forefront of efforts to monitor and enforce vacation rental activity. We were one of the first customers with a company out of California that did some monitoring of online listings. We made great progress with them in making sure the financial reporting was done by vacation rentals and that the permitting requirements were met. But we recently switched to a homegrown Durango company, which we're really, really proud to be partnering with them to track vacation rental listings and ensure that they're operating in compliance with their permits. So on both sides of that, in designing the program upfront and then the ongoing monitoring and enforcement, we feel like we have a really robust program. And even though we don't always agree with our vacation rental operators, we've built a great working relationship with them. We communicate with them regularly and we've received a lot of feedback from them, especially the ones that operate in other communities that the program is well designed and well administered. So the amendments before you are not major changes to the program. You know, over the past six years, we've learned some things. We've had to make judgment calls on how to apply the standards in unique situations. And really the intent now is to get a lot of those interpretations into code and then make adjustments again in line with the housing plan and some of the things we've learned about where these vacation rentals work well and do not work so well. And Dan will give you the details of that. Like I said, it's received national attention as a model from other communities in balancing the demand for VRs with also the urgent housing needs that we have in our community. So we don't want to do some, any major changes to the program. We want to make some minor adjustments and we think these will set us up well for the next six years and beyond to continue managing this, this kind of emerging and quickly evolving type of use. So I was involved in the initial design and implementation of the program. And since then, Dan Armentano on our staff has jumped in and done an amazing job continuing to round out the program, make adjustments, work with our customers and get them information. And so he's taken on a leadership role there and has done a great job. And we put this screenshot up here of the updates. We try to, you know, semi annually or quarterly, just give you counsel some of the numbers related to the program, just so you know that it's chugging right along and meeting the goals that we set for it. So Dan, again, has been instrumental in that. So I'm glad he'll be able to share his experience with you and the staff's recommendations on how to update the program. So I'll turn it over to him. And we can also, following public comment, we can include maybe a response to the one comment we got earlier on in the meeting and just clear up some of the things that were stated there. So Dan, you can go ahead and take it away.
Sounds good. Thanks, Scott, for the intro. So I'm going to start with just kind of the state of the program. Give you the overview of what the current status is. Right now, we've got 121 approved permits. The bulk of those are kind of in three of our zones. We've got 39 in EN 1 and 2, which are the two single family zones where we've instituted caps on the total number of vacation rentals. Those caps were reached in 2017. So 39 is the total for those two areas. We do have a number of folks on the waiting lists for those zones. In the central business zone, we have 34 permits. And the bulk of those are distributed between really two developments, the Jarvis Building and the Mears House. Jarvis in particular has, I would say, 15 vacation rentals out of 21 total residential units. So it's essentially operating as a de facto hotel. Mears House is a little less than half, but those two buildings do make up the bulk of the permits in that zone. And then in the planned development zones, we only have four planned developments where vacation rentals are currently allowed. Three of those four have caps on the total number of vacation rentals in those developments. And then the fourth is Ferringway, which is a little bit of an interesting development that was approved in the mid 80s actually as a hotel, even though it's really kind of minimized individual residential units. So more than 20 of those 31 are in the Ferringway development. And then in the RM, RH and ENMF, sorry, I'll spell those out. Residential medium, residential high and established neighborhood multifamily zones. Medium, high versus the densities. We have seven total permits across those three zones. And those are the zones that we are proposing to phase out the use. And I'll talk about that a little bit more on the next slide. And then in our two mixed use zones, we have 10 total permits. And as is shown on this graph here, the number of total permits has increased year over year since the program's inception. So the number 121 approved permits is the highest that we've ever had. So to start with the proposed changes, we do have kind of two different types of changes here. We've got the bigger changes, which are driven by the housing program as Scott described. And then we've got some general cleanup, more simple items. And I'll start with the bigger changes. So again, as I just mentioned, removing the use from the higher density residential zones. As I mentioned, there's only seven current vacation rental permits in these zones. The operators of those permits will be able to continue to operate with these changes. The permits won't expire unless they don't comply with their permit conditions anymore or if they don't renew their business licenses basically at their choice or until ownership changes. And then the other pretty significant change is requiring individual developments in the mixed use zones. That's mixed use arterial, mixed use neighborhood and the central business zone to have customized vacation rental standards. And that's similar to what we require in the planned development zones. So for new developments in these zones, we'll come up with those standards, work with applicants as they're going through the review process. And those specialized standards will need to require a cap on the total number of vacation rentals that are currently allowed. We've actually pretty much gone through this process with a few recent developments in the last couple of years. So this is sort of codifying that general policy. But a change here is that we'll also be requiring customized vacation rental standards for existing developments and buildings. So, you know, for mixed use buildings that already, may already have permitted vacation rentals, we want to go back and ensure that if those buildings have a previous land use approval, that that land use approval is modified or amended to contain language stating at least the number of vacation rentals that are allowed in those buildings. Most developments will have some sort of previous approval. For those that don't, there are a few older buildings, of course, in Durango that were, you know, mixed use have been mixed use over their lifetime and do include residential units, especially downtown. If there is no previous development approval, then we'll defer to private covenants or of course zoning in those circumstances as opposed to modifying or creating a development approval. So this is a nice visual kind of showing where vacation rentals are currently allowed and then where they will be allowed after, if these changes are approved. So any colored parcel or area on this map is an area where vacation rentals are currently allowed. The green areas are the mixed use zones and then EN 1 and 2 where vacation rentals would be allowed following these amendments. And as you can kind of tell, it's, those areas are sort of the more mixed use and commercial core of the city. Certainly the North Main corridor is mixed use arterial. And then EN 2 is kind of to either side of North Main. And then the downtown core central business zones, the mixed use neighborhood zoning along College Drive and East Eighth, and then the EN 1 zone. So those areas are certainly more urban. We feel that the vacation rental use is more appropriate in those zones based on just proximity to more commercial uses, higher intensity, intensity uses. The purple and orange areas represent the residential medium, high density zones and the ENMF multifamily zones. As you can tell, they're kind of scattered throughout the city a little bit more. They're not always located in more commercial areas. And because of that, we feel that they're maybe not the most appropriate areas for this use. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in upcoming slides. So these are the more minor changes. This is the kind of cleanup items that we've taken this opportunity to include. And I'll go through these pretty quick and then we can chat about them later on if you guys have questions. But first allowing tandem parking configurations in EN 1 and 2. Those are the single family zones where vacation rentals are allowed. A lot of those properties don't necessarily have enough parking without tandem configuration to meet our parking requirement for vacation rentals, which is pretty high, one space per bedroom in the home. These next two are just, again, codifying existing policies. Shared guest parking cannot be used as required parking for vacation rentals in multi unit buildings. And then properties with ADUs are not eligible for vacation rental use. This fourth one, requiring the business license and the permit number to be included in online advertisements. Right now, only the permit number is required, but we get a lot of confusion with this from a lot of our permit holders. They'll put the business license number instead of the permit number. For us, it's helpful to have the business license number. And so we just decided, well, maybe we just require both. And it's not that much more of a step for the, for the permit holder to just put that on their advertisements. So this fifth one won't come up too often, but requiring part time vacation rental operators to submit an annual audit indicating that they're in compliance with their permit conditions. We have a few areas where only vacation rentals can only operate on a part time basis. And that's always less than six months. And that the dates and times when they can operate are established by the permit. So this change will just give staff an opportunity to ensure that they're in compliance with those terms if we need to. And then finally, this last one was a, was a recommended change that was given to us by one of our planning commissioners. And this is just requiring that notices within the permitted vacation rentals. And so those are the notices that a tenant will see when they, excuse me, when they go into the unit for rent. But those notices will describe the parking locations and the city noise ordinance requirements. In addition to some, some other items that the code already requires, that's sort of adding on. To go over the public comment, we received two formal comments prior to the planning commission hearing. The first comment was related to requiring that the city, requiring the city tell vacation operators they have to make some ADA accommodations for travelers with disabilities. We talked with our building official about this. And since vacation rental permits are inherently issued to residential properties, he said the ADA doesn't apply to residential properties. So we wouldn't really be able to do that. Second comment was advocating for short term, short term room rentals for owner occupied properties. Right now, we typically just permit those with a vacation rental permit. This is basically someone that lives in their house that wants to rent out a room in their house. We do have a major accessory use for this, but it's only, it's kind of an experimental use and it's only allowed in the rural agricultural zone. It's something that's worth talking about, but it's not included in the, in the proposals before you tonight. And then some informal inquiries that came in before tonight's hearing focused generally a lot of times on whether an individual property will be impacted by these changes. And then as Scott mentioned, we did get some feedback from some of the vacation rental management companies about how the tailored requirements for mixed use zones would be implemented specifically for buildings that already have permitted vacation rentals. If we're going to go back and change the standards for those buildings, you know, what are the impacts going to be on those existing permits? I'll talk about that a little bit more on the next slide. And then finally, we did get some comments just in support of phasing out the use in the residential medium, high and multifamily zones. So this is the amended language that we are proposing to kind of add on to what has been submitted to you as red lines to the code in the agenda documentation. So this first one is, applies in a scenario where there is vacation, permitted vacation rentals in a mixed use building where there is no language on a prior land use approval stating that vacation rentals are allowed. And the change just is essentially saying that lawfully permitted vacation rentals in those buildings will be allowed to continue to operate as long as they maintain their permit conditions. So even if the changes are made to that previous land use approval, those permits are, those permits are still valid. And then the next change refers to caps in those buildings. So if there's an amendment requested for an existing development and there's existing vacation rental permits in that development, the cap that the city would recommend or basically negotiate with the, with the property owners would not be less than the number of existing permits in that development. So if there's a 10 unit mixed use property and we're amending that to place a cap, but then there's three vacation rentals permitted in that building right now, we wouldn't say, oh, well, the cap is now two. So one of your vacation rentals has to go away. We'll say that the cap can be three. So just codifying that language to try to provide a little bit more surety for some of the vacation rental management companies. So go through the LEDC review criteria for text amendments. I'll go through these pretty quick. The first one is the big one. The proposed amendment supports adopted plans and policies. As we've mentioned, these are really driven by the housing plan. The second one is the amendments are consistent with the purposes, requirements, limitations, standards and criteria of the LEDC. The amendments will further the health, safety or general welfare of the community and the amendments will provide for community benefits. So I'll start out talking about the housing plan and this is the specific. So I'll start out talking about the housing plan and this is the specific action item. Directly from the housing plan and I'll read this one. So evaluate the steady growth of vacation rentals in Durango's housing market. Additional fees on vacation rentals should be considered to offset the cost of impacts created by the vacation rental market. And limitations on vacation rentals should be considered for other zones. So we took this action item. First thing we did was look at vacation rentals and the program. And we noted that obviously the number of vacation rentals has increased year over year since 2014. So how do we address that? The the first item was the tailored vacation rental requirements in the central business and mixed use zones. We'll ensure that we have a balance between permitted vacation rentals and long-term resident residential units in those buildings. We'll work with developers and property owners, vacation rental management companies to determine what the appropriate standards will be. For each development, whether it's a new development or an existing one. But we'll try to and ensure that we avoid situations where buildings can operate. As de facto, it's all see more than half of the units or up to half of the units are potentially operating as a vacation rental. And then we looked at the multifamily zones and we found that really there can be conflicts between this use and long-term renters. There's also frequently conflicts with existing covenants. I've had a few situations where folks have applied, paid our $750 fee and then find out that the covenants don't allow the use. In in their in their development and then we had to go through the withdrawal process, so. That's come up a few times. We've also found and feel that generally these higher density zones are good locations for. For infill and for for future residential growth. And we don't want to see those, the new units in these areas. Used for this purpose. We want to see units in these areas used for long-term. Either long-term rentals or for residents of Durango. And then just to adjust the fees, we haven't really found that changing those is necessary at this point. If we do decide that needs to change at some point in the future, those changes can be made administratively. So generally, we find that the proposed changes align with the housing plan's action item and therefore comply with the first LEDC review criteria. And then just to address the three other criteria. The amendments do align with the other articles, divisions and sections of the land use code. They further the general welfare of the community by just providing clarity and a little bit more flexibility. And also supporting the adopted housing goals. And then they provide community benefits by helping to preserve existing residential development capacity, preserving those existing units. And also preserving the character in those multi-unit buildings by ensuring that they're not overrun by vacation rentals. So to conclude, staff finds that the proposal does align with the LEDC requirements. As Scott mentioned, planning commission heard this at their September 20 meeting and recommended approval on a four to zero vote. Got a motion on screen, but I'm sure we'll have discussion before that, so I will hand it back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And I can't see my screens, my matrix, am I on mute? Can you hear me okay?
I can stop sharing for now.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Any questions, immediate questions for staff from council at this point? If not, I'll open up the public hearing. Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and. Receive comments from anybody and again, that's a three-minute situation. You will raise your hand in the. In Zoom or star nine if you're on the phone and our moderator will let you in and provide testimony in three minutes.
Mayor, we do have someone here. Mary Beth Miles, I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Great, thank you so much, Mary Beth Miles. My address is 3521 Bennett Street. Mr. Mayor in City Council, thank you so much for your time this evening. I'm the COO for Premier Vacation Rentals Group. We're locally owned company based out of Durango, Colorado. Our home base is out of Durango. And we just wanted to share a little bit of feedback relative to the proposed policy changes that are up for consideration by council this evening. We certainly appreciate staff's efforts to clarify the code language and engage stakeholders throughout this process. While we're seeing the revisions to the proposed policy language for the first time this evening as part of Dan's presentation and Scott's presentation. We did, we were able to provide some feedback in advance of this session relative to the draft language that appeared in the council's agenda documentation. We commend the city's efforts that they took in dating back to 2014 to develop their nationally recognized VR policies. And while in general, we don't support policy revisions that further restrict vacation rentals as a permitted use. We do appreciate staff's efforts to clarify some of the components in the code language that are presently unclear. We do support revising the parking requirements in EN one and EN two to allow tandem parking. We are certainly interested in how the business license renewal requirements will be administered. Over time and would look forward to some additional clarification from staff as part of that process. Something in the way of a grace period just to ensure that those of us who are intending to comply with the city's requirements are able to do so. And then finally, we would encourage council to ensure that the proposed policy revisions don't further restrict the number. Of vacation rentals that are able to be permitted within the city. Specifically in instances for existing buildings that don't have a PD. And have an HOA that has adopted its own regulations, that these buildings are continued. Allowed to continue to operate under their existing policies. We would encourage the city to continue its longstanding policy to allow HOAs to develop their own policies and manage their own governance. Without developing and issuing separate governing documents such as SUPs or CUPs to further restrict the number of vacation rentals that are permitted. We're supportive of the intent, as Dan mentioned. To defer to private covenants and at a minimum, ensure that the number of permitted vacation rentals are not denigrated. Though we wouldn't necessarily support a cap. And then finally, you know, we feel that affordable housing and long-term rentals and vacation rentals aren't mutually exclusive. We think that the city's existing regulations are sufficiently restrictive and strike an effective balance between the multiple uses. I think that's all. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Mitchell, do we have another? Another invitee?
We do have quite a few people in the audience, so if you're here to speak to this specific agenda item, please use the raise hand function. Mayor, I do see another one here. Dan Corman, you have been permitted to speak. Please unmute yourself and. Give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Dan Corman, 513 East 30th, and thank you so much for letting me chime in. Again, I was unaware that there was a second discussion, so. I'll be brief. There is no reason a homeowner should not be able to rent out a room in their home or an ADU on their property at which they live. It's especially in times like these when there's so much uncertainty and people are losing their jobs, cutting hours. And the ability to earn supplemental income within their single-family residence should be allowed. To both let locals and people visiting alike. Utilize the local experience and that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Once again, if you're here to speak to this agenda item, please raise your hand. Mayor, we have another one. Keith Brandt, it is your turn to speak. Please unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Keith Brandt, I live at 12 Blizzard Head Drive in Durango. I'm the CFO of Durango Premier Vacation Rentals and obviously I echo Mary Beth's comments. So I'm not going to repeat all of that. And I did want to add a couple of other things. I do want to, I do want to thank Scott once again. He's been great about reaching out to us and getting our feedback. We manage 35-ish properties and city limits, so we're one of the largest vacation rental companies that operate in the city. And Scott's been great about reaching out to us to get our feedback and actually listening to us. And we've had some experience with Dan as well, getting permits issued and Dan's been great as well, so. I wanted to compliment you guys on on being collaborative, if you will, and that's been great. I also wanted to mention that I think it's great that the tandem parking requirements. Are being allowed now. We tried to get that done when I was on council back in 2014. I think that's great. I think they should be expanded beyond EN one and EN two. To to any vacation rental, I don't think you minimize that to simply EN one and EN two, but. If it's a rule, let's make it a rule for all properties. And the last thing is increasing fees for vacation rentals. And that's not part of this agenda item or what's going to be approved, but. On average, we're collecting a couple thousand dollars per property and sales tax that we remit onto the city as well as lodgers tax and state and county. And, you know, we're collecting the money and remitting it, so putting additional fees on those that collect money doesn't make sense to me. That's all I had and again, I echo Mary Beth's comments, but I'm not going to waste everybody's time repeating all of that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Keith. Good to hear from you. And Mitchell, do we have another participant?
So far, I don't see anybody else raising their hand. If you are here to speak to this agenda item, now is the time. Please use the raise hand function. Mayor, we have another one.
Excellent.
Rachel Arnold, excuse me, it's your turn to talk. Please introduce yourself, give us your address and you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Rachel Arnold. I live at 34511 Highway 550 in Pine Acres. My husband and I just moved here and this year, as for everyone, has been a struggle for us and being able to rent out our property to maintain. Our move has been, has been the only thing that's really kept us afloat, so I will say that I believe that there is a lot to be discussed here and I understand that why. Our community needs to, you know, have some foundation around. Where where rentals should be permitted and not and actually, you know, how how they're being governed, but. I do think that it's very vital for the community, especially when it comes to being able to tax it and monetize it for the development. Of Durango that it's a wonderful thing, so I really like to see that there's so many people participating in the discussion and. Just a short side note about what we're dealing with and how much it's helped us, so thank you for bringing this to the community to discuss.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Appreciate it. And we'll. Was expecting more more input, but if we're reaching the end, that's.
Yeah, Mayor, we still have quite a few attendees. If you are here to speak during this agenda item, please raise your hand now. Mayor, I do not see anybody else raising their hand.
Thank you, Mitchell. With that, I'll close this public hearing and. Return to discussion by counselors and counselors. Now's the time to ask staff any any questions or have conversation amongst ourselves regarding this issue. Barbara.
Thank you, and thank you, Scott and Dan, for an excellent presentation. I just want to clarify a few things. On the central business district, is there a cap that, I don't believe there's a cap now that exists, will there be a cap? Or a set or any kind of increased restrictions on the number? In the central business district, other than, you know, how you described the different developments and the existing. Units available.
Yeah, so there won't be a cap for the zone on its own. There will be potentially caps for individual development, so. Yeah, no zoning, no zone wide caps for the central business or the mixed use zones. Just kind of development specific caps when those come up.
Yeah, so it'd be it'll be unit, it'll be development by development. Thank you. The other question I did want to confirm because both Dan and I believe Rachel mentioned this. You mentioned in the presentation that you're not addressing rental of bedrooms in a home at this time, correct?
That's correct, so we've historically permitted like room rentals essentially as a vacation rental. Because we don't really have a better mechanism for that at the moment. There, I think this is kind of a broader discussion, but we do have like sort of a. I guess an experimental section of code that we use for really one property is in the rural agricultural zone. A short-term room rental can operate as an accessory use. We've only ever issued one of those permits. And it hasn't been expanded further beyond that. We have received some feedback on that in the past, but it's not part of these amendments tonight, so.
Thank you. That's very good. Thank you.
We can go around. Mayor Protan Baxter, do you have any, not to put you on the spot, but did you have any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, right, Dean. Okay, yeah, I did actually have a couple of questions and thoughts, so. I I believe that the end game here and and I this what I'm, the question I'm asking. Is that we end up with with all the things that we're we're doing. End up somewhere down the line with housing that's more attainable by. Our 80 to 120% average median income earners. Is that where we're going with these types of adjustments?
And I'll jump in, Dan, if. Yeah, overall, you know, as a stated goal of the housing plan, this would just be obviously one arrow in the quiver to try and accomplish that very, very large goal. Especially when we look at the zones, the medium density, high density and the multifamily zones. Those are areas where you would get a more dense product. Maybe smaller units, so those would tend to be in the more affordable range. As either a rental or a for-sale unit, so I think there's a correlation there. As far as what we're proposing to to phase out those zones from vacation rental use.
Okay, first of all, let me apologize for not having sent you some of these questions earlier. I'm on vacation. I'm trying to do my best here to get to everything. So. How are there communities that have adopted similar restrictions that have been more successful with their affordable housing costs and? Are you going to, do you have any way to track the benefits or the drawbacks of these kinds of changes?
Yeah, again, I would, I would just say, you know, the vacation rental program is one component. Of the broader housing program. And so I don't think this on its own will. You know, even dramatically impact housing affordability. It would just, it's just a piece of the pie that we need to address. So that we're not further taking units out of the housing stock, which contribute to keeping the prices low, so. That would be the overall sort of philosophy. As far as other communities, you know, we've we've interacted with a lot of communities. And it really depends on. Sort of the community's vision for itself and and the type of community it is, so. Communities like Park City, Utah, Breckenridge, they don't really care how many vacation rentals they have. They just want to make sure they're paying the lodger's tax, so they don't have things like caps. Their housing is probably already too far off the charts to bring back in. They just again want to make sure when tourists are coming to their community, they're getting the revenue. Other communities like Steamboat, you know, our community. And other just less full-on resort communities have this approach where they're saying. Yeah, we realize this is a need. We want to accommodate it in the right spots, but we don't want it to overrun our residential neighborhoods. And either change the character of those or again, take housing units out of the supply chain. Which then would raise, you know, costs for those other units.
So in that vein about the character of our community, one of the things that. Well, there's been several questions that I asked about the 2018 housing plan and one of the major ones is how are we measuring this? How are we measuring how affordable, attainable? Keeping our character in our community is right now versus all the things that we will eventually do to try to help maintain that or make it better or enhance it. Such as this. You know, I would encourage us to make that a priority so that we, as we start making these changes, we have some way to measure. What progress we're actually making. And I don't know what that looks like, you know, there's some really simple ones out there, the number of housing starts per thousand people. There's a lot of communities that have a lot of interesting metrics that I would really like to encourage us to look at so that we. Know that we're making progress and we're not going in the wrong direction. know that we're making progress and we're not going in the wrong direction or that, yeah, making progress. Interesting, was there forty two or forty seven enforcement letters sent out? Are they usually the same units or are they spread across the total numbers? And is that a, what kind of percentage is that? Is that thirty percent?
In terms of, I guess, in terms of, you said the forty four letters, is that on one of those flyers we sent out about like an informational update, a recent one?
Yeah, it was in your presentation.
Oh, okay, yeah, at the beginning of this. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we, I'm not sure exactly the number for two thousand and twenty at this point. I think last year we had somewhere around forty or so letters sent out. Typically, those are just folks that are unaware of our regulations. So, you know, for whatever reason, they move to town, you know, decide they want to do either a short term room rental or maybe it's a full vacation rental. And they list it and then our our tracking contractor finds the listing, identifies the property and and sends out sends out a notice. Since we've gone to lodging revs, which is our new contractor following the termination of our contract with host compliance. Two thousand and twenty has been an interesting year, of course. Not nearly as many vacation rental listings popping up for obvious reasons. But I think this year we've had probably less than certainly less than fifteen, maybe less than ten enforcement letters that have been sent out. Those have almost always been folks that weren't aware of our regulations. They get one letter and then, you know, the the listing comes down. I was looking at the software recently and it was telling me that we have a ninety eight point nine seven percent compliance rate, which is incredibly good. I think they they say that if you're better than ninety five percent, then you're doing really well. So so far, the enforcement seems to be going pretty well for us, so.
Lodger's rev, I appreciate that. I'm gonna let somebody else ask questions. I have some comments later on, but.
Counselor Yusuf, were you ready to? Did you have any thoughts or questions?
You know, I just, I think it'll be interesting to hear staff respond to some of the comments that we're hearing from our realtors. We received the letter from I believe it was Amanda Erickson, Durango Area Association of Realtors, as well as Don Corman, who just spoke. And Keith Brant on, you know, and 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 Don and Keith didn't speak to this particularly, but on the issue of how this type of policy that we're discussing, I understand and I really appreciate staff's discussion around balancing that need for you know, taking, having the opportunity of the vacation rental, but also balancing our desire to maintain our quality of life and our character. But the flip side of that argument is this, you know, we're restricting private property rights. And I I've heard that in some of my outreach to residents today and yesterday about this issue that I knew was coming up. And I kind of wanted to hear your response to that. Is it just this balance to try to preserve and protect our quality of life or 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 do you have a different, I'm sure you've heard that argument. So can you kind of touch on that?
Yeah, so I think I'll start with just zoning in in general. You know, certainly the city has the right to zone and then regulate uses throughout throughout our jurisdiction. As far as specific to vacation rentals, it's really a commercial use of a residential property. So, you know, there are some, it's very, really very few scenarios where we allow commercial uses of residential properties. Home occupations is is one circumstance. That's typically just a homeowner working from home. You know, if we if we're discussing vacation rentals, and there's a lot of other issues that come into play that need to be regulated and controlled, really to minimize the impacts to neighborhoods, whether we're talking about parking on site, you know, even even occupancy and ensuring like compliance with safety codes. So that's something that we require with with vacation rentals is the property needs to meet building codes and needs better to see how to egress. So, you know, with the commercial use of a residential property, that's where, you know, as as planning staff, we we look at that and say, hey, this isn't a standard use in that area and it needs some additional consideration and permitting and and really assessment as to whether or not it's appropriate in some of our zones, all of our zones, none of our zones. And I think the the city has done a pretty good job working through that and coming up with an effective way to regulate use, so.
Well, the other thing that I kind of uncovered or, you know, heard a couple times in my outreach on the subject was that in the neighborhoods, and I think it's important to to make the clarification, for me it was anyway, is that in this, in the neighborhoods where we are talking about restricting the short term vacation rental use, it doesn't prohibit them from doing the long term vacation rental use thirty one days and over. And I've heard from a couple residents that were really worried about this program in two thousand and fourteen when we began to implement it, that in that they've actually changed their stance, that they don't mind the long term rental. In fact, it's almost better than a second, than someone living in it permanently because they're maybe in for a month and out for a month. And so there's maybe even less disturbance than there might otherwise be. And so it was important for me to note that even in those neighborhoods, they still, you still can have a long term rental. And so that was one important clarification that I I found interesting. And I I do, I I would like to have continued discussions on the ability to rent a room out. I think that is definitely a worthwhile discussion to have at some point. Likely not tonight as far as this discussion, but I think it's an item that we may want to add to an agenda for a future time period. I think that room rental mechanism has merit and can and can potentially help families, you know, during times of need to supplement income. And the other thing that I wanted to follow up on was Keith Brant's topic of allowing tandem through tandem parking in other neighbor neighborhoods. I was wondering if staff could follow up on 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 that possibility.
Yeah, I think the reason we didn't include tandem parking, I'll I'll start with that one is really because in E N one and two, that's those are kind of the only zones where tandem parking is likely to be an option. In the mixed use zones in the central business district, there's really not there's probably, maybe there's some, but there's most of the parking for units in those zones are common parking in like a parking lot as opposed to being a driveway or some location where a tandem parking configuration would really even be feasible. So just kind of based on that, we felt like it wouldn't really be worthwhile to include in those other zones. So I think that was kind of the the idea behind that.
The reason why I asked that question, because I was one, I was wondering, and you may correct me, this may be a wrong assumption, but I was thinking that if you were allowing that type of parking in areas where it was, where 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 it might be available, then might it allow for potential more density? I mean, if if, you know, I I don't know if it'd have any impact on it, but potentially more housing, I don't know.
In terms of, yeah, I guess that that's a valid point in terms of if we're looking at a new development and that development is proposed with tandem parking configurations to meet the parking requirements for those new residential units. Would we allow that tandem parking configuration to be used in a circumstance where those units were permitted vacation rentals? Honestly, that's not something that I think that we really talked about or considered, but I think that's a valid point.
Yeah, I was just following up from Mr. Brant's comment, but yeah. So maybe another item we might want to add to discussion point for later possibly, because I thought it was a good point as well.
Counselor Yusuf, maybe I could, you asked a couple of times about responding to comments, so maybe I could do that. Now, I just note at the beginning that there there was support for the parking allowance. And so all of these are not further restrictions on the vacation rental program. Some of them are allowances from things we've learned that you know, are not such a big issue, and so we've decided to allow them, so.
Right.
And just note that. There is, I think Mary Beth had a question about business license renewal and that process, and I think that was related to when we say as long as a business license is maintained, then the vacation rental will be able to continue operating. We don't use that if if, you know, somebody misses the renewal of their business license by a week or a couple of weeks. We don't use that as a way to pull their permit out from under them. We will usually send a warning, we'll have a grace period where they can renew their business license. You know, some of these V R operators are just homeowners, they might miss it. And so I think that was the nature of Mary Beth's question. And so I just wanted to give counsel that reference that, you know, we we usually do have a warning and we don't just yank it right out from under people. I think overall, from both Mary Beth and Keith, I think the proposed revisions that we've included in that slide got to the heart of their concerns about trying to ratchet down existing permits. That really isn't the intent as far as how we're proposing to move forward with the central business district or mixed use zones. It's just trying to get more clarity by incorporating numbers and the the V R use into the governing documents for the development. And that's why we put that language in there about, you know, it will not be fewer than are currently permitted. If we if we do a cap, we'll acknowledge the ones that are there. They've been operating. And we don't see them as causing major issues. We just want to get more clarity for everybody, for property owners, for staff to know exactly what the situation is. Mr. Corman, I think, mentioned in the E N three zone, which is Animus City. I think he said that's the only residential neighborhood where vacation rentals are not allowed. And I just wanted to clear that up. It's actually the exception if they are allowed in residential neighborhoods. So E N one and E N two are the only residential neighborhoods where the community decided to allow vacation rentals. Places like Riverview, Crestview Needham, Animus City, Sky Ridge and all those other neighborhoods in the community do not allow vacation rentals. It's not a cap. It's just it's not an allowed use in those neighborhoods. And again, that came out of months of public dialogue on the topic back in two thousand and fourteen. I think our initial proposal back then was actually more permissive and had higher caps, and then we ratcheted that down based on public input. And so just would, yeah, remind counsel of that whole process that went into the guts of this program, which we're not, we're not intending to change at this point. And then the last person that commented mentioned they were in the Pine Acres condos. Those are in the county. Those aren't actually in the city limits, so these standards would not affect their the use of their property. One thing, and just sorry to close the loop on that tandem parking discussion. One thing you might do is include the a P D zone as potentially allowed for tandem parking. So you could do E N one, E N two and P D as described in their development agreement or something like that, just to address that point that you raised.
Great. Thank you. And I also want to thank you, you and 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 staff, all of you for for you know, kind of clarifying the history, where this came from and why, what, you know, why we're talking about it today. And because I do recall before I got on council, it was a huge process. And I, you know, I was coming in kind of on the tail end of it and the things had already been decided at that point, but I recall a very, very significant public outreach effort. And it was very inclusive. So it's interesting where we went as a community and it seems to have been working. It seems to have been working quite well. So I just want to thank you for providing that history.
Thank you, Melissa. Another round of Barbara, did you have another comment?
I just had a quick question for Scott or Dan. Yeah, I know that you reached out to the vacation rental companies. I was wondering, because when I was chatting with people today, they commented about really being concerned about the character of their neighborhood and knowing their neighbors rather than that, you know, constant churning, if you will. Did you hear from, and maybe it's just a question of not being aware, but was there any outreach to the individuals in the different neighborhoods that could be, rather than the companies that could be impacted?
Yes, we didn't have any any community meetings. I do feel like there was a pretty good notice procedure for for the public. So you know, we did get, I think, one comment in support of removing the use from the residential high density zone just based on some issues that they had had with an existing vacation rental in their neighborhood. You know, I think generally people are supportive of exactly what you're talking about, ensuring that they have some community and that they know their neighbors and that, you know, they don't have vacation rentals surrounding their property. And I think really the the reason why we don't have that issue is because of the initial process that we went through in two thousand and fourteen to get the caps in place. We have density requirements in E N one and two, as far as one vacation rental being allowed for street segment. There can be a second and sort of strange circum, infrequent circumstances if it's approved by the by the planning commission and if it's owner occupied. So in that case, they would still know their neighbor. That's the part time vacation rentals that we that we were talking about a little bit earlier as well. So, yeah, I don't think we have a huge problem with this mostly. You know, again, I think there are a few mixed use buildings that are higher densities of vacation rentals, and that's to an extent what we're trying to avoid with with some of these amendments, so.
Thank you. I I just wanted to, being the, I guess, the only remaining member of city council that drafted this along with, and as I look in the Zoom, I I think I lost a little hair over what I had seven years ago. I'm surprised that Dirk has still got all of his, because he was certainly crafted a lot of the language that went into this. But, you know, I think, you know, I was a little shocked when when we got this when we got this series of proposed changes in that philosophically, are we tightening or are we loosening? And as Scott mentioned, you know, we got some, there's some winds, we've got tandem parking, we got some relaxation of a few issues which are quite large in, when you come down to a specific site, but but in general, it it I think that two thousand and eighteen housing plan, that when you had it up on the slide, the thing that resonated there was look at opportunity for additional neighborhoods where this could be appropriately implemented. So we've kind of glossed over, you know, we've sidestepped that particular challenge of the two thousand and eighteen housing master plan to look at, as Mr. Corman mentioned, Animus City as an example. And, you know, what has been the impact of this over the seven years? And what I see is is it has been mentioned earlier, this really has no bearing, significant bearing, it always has bearing, but no significant bearing on housing affordability in my mind. It's it's one hundred percent about character and livability, as was was the challenge from the community and in in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, when we crafted this. So and I think we've we've done that. We saved our neighborhoods to a large degree. Counselor Baxter asked about other communities. Breckenridge, eighty percent of every door in in the town is is a vacation rental. They have no neighborhoods. They have no kids with strollers running up and down the sidewalks. People don't walk their dogs unless they're happen to be trying to find a place to dog walk from Dallas in their vacation rental. So I think it's really achieved in large part what what council set out to do at that potential that or that period in time. And it has been used as a model for many, many other communities. In fact, we're it's one point in time when throughout the state of Colorado, this was a number of presentations. I know I presented it, Scott's presented it as as a model of how to protect your neighborhoods throughout the state. But, you know, I think what we're seeing here tonight is, you know, is an attempt to address those issues which are basically conflicts that have arisen, that have evidenced themselves over the period of seven years of the of the code's existence. And so and again, it doesn't really impact housing affordability, but are we doing the right thing by by just extracting some some areas, specifically the multifamily areas is kind of the question. That's my only hesitation on this thing. The when we crafted it, we knew that HOAs, we when we crafted it, we knew that HOAs, we really didn't want to, we as a government didn't want to dictate to each and every HOA how they implemented this, this, this particular code. In other, in other words, we knew there's existing HOAs that they want. Were they excited about this concept? Many of them were. Others just didn't want it at all. And there was internal strife between particularly like 1201 Main was one of the more articulated battles of that time. And, and we as the city said, you've create your own destiny HOA. You know, if you want them, you write your own rules within your HOA. And that was kind of the, how we left it. And so I'm trying to figure out what's different today. And I totally appreciate needing to articulate it. So the city knows what's going on, but I, my, my own personal opinion is let them fight their own battles within their, within their building. The problem that has occurred is Jarvis, right? Where has been pointed out, it's pretty much gone to a hotel. And at what point do we step in and say, you know, you're a hotel. You've got 100% rooms. You're, you have independent ownerships, but you are a hotel. So that's, you know, how do we address that? And maybe what you've done is, is by throwing it back to them and saying, okay, give us a plan. What would we do if they came back and said, yeah, we want to have 100% hotels or vacation rentals? Okay, then what's our method of enforcement? We just know that that exists. There's still individual ownerships until they turn into a hotel. And, you know, so I particularly like the idea of just letting them fight their own battles. We've heard from, I think it was Tom Berry wrote us a letter from out at Elkton and a group of townhomes within an HOA, they've had conflicts. They evidently allowed themselves to allow a few of their homeowners to be vacation rentals. That happened. They, you know, they've had conflicts out there. They, and so they internally are governing themselves, maybe voting at a next homeowners association meeting that we won't allow anymore. I think that's an appropriate method of, of allowing those HOAs to have some level of self-control. Similarly, you know, I'd love to be in a homeowners association meeting at Jarvis, you know, where, you know, they go, yeah. You know, everybody happy? Yeah, we're 100% vacation rentals. And so, you know, it is a problem, but I, I think overall, you know, I was hoping that we would still allow HOAs to sort of self-govern them so that we don't have to do that. I've got a couple more points, Barbara.
Okay, thank you.
The, so and I really would like to explore, as Mr. Corman asked, and that was what we kind of looked at, was this is an experiment. We're going to limit it to EN1 and EN2, but we fully recognize that there, there would be neighborhoods based on this experiment, which I believe has been a successful experiment in limiting and maintaining character in our neighborhoods, where we could expand beyond EN1 and EN2 and look at places like Animus City that could be opportune without driving up the housing cost and without ruining the character of the neighborhood by imposing, looking at those neighborhoods with similar limitations that we've got here in EN1. And I think I'm on some waiting list. I hope, I was hoping that you would, you know, the, the week that they, no leniency, when they, they don't re-up in a week, then, then pass it on to the next guy. But, no, that, but at any rate, I'm just, I'm a little concerned that we, all those purple places, the multifamily places, I'd like to know that there was actual demonstrated conflict in those areas that was expressed by the community before we just zapped their capability to consider a vacation rental. I really respected your, your thought though, that it would limit growth. I mean, we want to encourage infill in those areas, but I'm not thinking that limiting vacation rentals in those areas has really any significant impact on the ability to create additional infill, therefore more units in those multifamily areas. But that's my, HOAs and zapping multifamily out of this picture is, which is two of your biggest components, obviously, are still concerns of mine for a program that's really working well overall. And, you know, I think the staff has really administered this thing over the seven year period really, really well. So that's my only comments. Barbara?
Yes, thank you, Dean. Actually, I have a follow-up question to your points. You started by talking about Breckenridge, and I remember my first visit there. It was like, this is just, this is not a town, in my own view. So you, you talked about not wanting to be Breckenridge, but you also talked about wanting to let HOAs just have at it. And, you know, and so what, where's the mechanism for preventing that unless there is some, you know, code issues around this? And so to my point, I, I look at the work the staff has done and I look at their expertise and their experiences and I say, this looks like a middle, little, middle path to some of the, you know, the things that they feel are necessary to help them achieve some of our goals.
Well, what happened in Breckenridge was, yeah, not, not just a coalition of homeowners associations. It was, they didn't have any, you know, they, they embraced it. They, they didn't have neighborhoods. They were clearly growing in that direction. And they are a resort. They consider them as a resort. But, yeah, but, but I, I appreciate it. I just, I don't want to renege on the, on that concept that we gave to those homeowners associations years ago that said, you shall self-govern, basically. And, and that was a pretty big part of what we did. Kim, go ahead.
I'd like to move that we adopt the proposed amendments, whoops, to sections 2234 and 2133 of the Land Use and Development Code, Vacation Rental Homes with the findings stated in the September 28, 2020 Planning Commission Staff Report and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance to adopt those text amendments and incorporate them for a first reading at a regularly scheduled council meeting.
We have a motion? Second. I heard a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, Mayor Brookie. And just for clarification on the motion, please. We had two proposed revisions that we presented you tonight based on responding to public comments. So I just want to make sure Councilor Baxter's motion, do you want to include those revisions in the motion?
Yes, that was my intention.
Scott, would you mind just summarizing those briefly so we know the intent of those revisions?
Yeah, the two presented tonight, the one talks about existing lawfully permitted vacation rentals shall be, shall be able to continue operating and are not affected by the, the requirements to incorporate new language into a development agreement. So those can continue to operate. The second is when we look at individual buildings and work with the associations and the property owners to come up with a cap and allowance for VRs, that number shall not be less than the existing permitted vacation rental. So we're not ratcheting down the existing scenario. We're just providing clarity on what's allowed in the future. Those are the two that we presented tonight.
I think it's really helpful that you, I'm just sorry to butt in, but I just think it's so helpful that you clarify that we're, you're just seeking clarity. You're not further restricting. That's been very helpful for me to understand. Thank you.
So I did have a couple of comments I wanted to make during our discussion period. So one of them is that as with all codes, plans, guidelines that we adopt, I believe that we'll find times when things need to change. And that's all in the best interest of continuous improvement and doing a better job. Every time we learn something, we get better at it. So I think that this is one of those situations. I also would like to speak to property values. Anytime that you have rental income on a property value versus not having rental income, you, you, you increase the value of that property. And it makes it harder for people to afford because the price goes up. And so if you don't rent out that part of your property, even if that wasn't something you'd want to do, it does make it a less affordable building. Additionally, in the way that Colorado's property taxes work, every time your neighbor's value goes up, so does yours. So that increases property taxes for everyone in the community, not just for the rental property owner. So I'm, I question whether or not there isn't an increase on property values and on affordability. I actually think that there is a a negative impact on affordability in the community because it increases property values. And everything we can do to provide a higher volume of housing, therefore more inventory helps decrease affordability, helps increase our affordability. So that's the comment I wanted to make about property values and affordability. I also don't think that the intention ever was that an HOA should rule their universe without city guidance. I don't think that you, there are lots of things that we may not want to allow in, in owners, homeowners associations. And their restrictions as ours with the state can probably be more restrictive, but not less restrictive than the community that they live in. And if the community that they live in wants to see the character maintained, then I think the city and the community have the right to do so. Independent of what may have been someone's thought about how that was going to happen in the past. So, and you can look at this in the, in the context of planned developments also. You, you don't want a developer coming in and saying, well, we're just going to do our own agreements among everyone who builds here. I think they have to, I think they have to abide by city guidance. So the other two things that I, that I know you know about, because I sent an email out about them have to do with a conversation I want to have in the future about commercial properties, de facto, commercial properties versus residential and property taxes. So I want that, I'd like to have a conversation about that in the future in a study session. And I also wanted to have a conversation about whether or not second homes should also be discussed property tax-wise. So that's something I'd like to put on the agenda for the future that relates to this. Thank you.
Really noted. And yeah, I, I, I too agree that a critical part of our land use process should be identifying these for future HOAs and future planned unit developments. Certainly, that was just the transition period there that we are now imposing new restrictions on existing HOAs that thought they had a deal and now we're changing it in my mind. But that's, but I agree with everything else you were saying, quite honestly, you can clearly that is the impact on affordability is that if somebody's making more money next door that raises their property value, you are impacted just by being on that block. So clearly. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll ask for a roll call.
Councilor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Brookie?
No. Okay, well, that's, we'll move on to the next item, which is a continued, the next item 9.2.1 officially was withdrawn. It was a continued public hearing on the Cummins Initial Zoning and Conceptual Plan, and that was withdrawn for this meeting. Is that correct? Just want to get clarity relative to, they didn't withdraw that project for the public to know. They just withdrew for this meeting. Is that correct? He's dialing back in.
Mayor, Mayor Brookie, I'm happy to speak with that, or Kevin Hall can also speak to it, but it actually has been withdrawn completely. They, the developers were in communication with some adjacent property owners. And they decided to withdraw. They're working on a redesign of that project and they plan to resubmit and go back to planning commission and then they'll be before you with a different design in the next few months.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott. Very important update and appreciate your, that, that notification. All right, but knowing that, we will move on to 10.1. From our city attorney, we have a draft ordinance for review, which is an ordinance amending Division 1, Article 6 of Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango to amend and create procedures regarding the receipt of complaints and other actions on violations related to municipal. And it stops there, but it's elections, as I recall.
Campaign finance matters. Yes, Mr. Mayor, and worked with the clerk's office extensively over the last few weeks. There was a hearing conducted on this issue previously with council and we've worked on preparing this ordinance in response to a change in the statute that was adopted by the legislature earlier this year that directed that all municipal campaign finance matters regarding any allegation that the Campaign Practices Act had been violated would be filed with the municipal clerk. So with that in mind, and this is a fairly complicated matter, so in terms of setting up a new procedure, so rather than setting it up for first reading tonight, the clerk's office preferred to, and I agreed, to make it available for comment and then put it back on the agenda next, in two weeks for a first reading to allow for public comment and review. So at this point, likewise, to also allow additional time for council, because council expressed the desire to be able to spend some time reviewing this before you considered it for first reading. So I would entertain any specific questions now. Otherwise, this will be posted on the website. It probably already is posted on the website. And we'll be seeking comments and then we'll be back for a first reading in the next meeting.
Next meeting will be the 20th to the October.
November the
November 3rd. November 3rd?
The 3rd is the election, so it's actually going to be on Monday, the 2nd.
Got it.
That's the current plan.
Yeah. Excellent. So this is administrative, excuse me, it's an introduction of an ordinance. There's no public hearing with regard to this particular action and it's not giving me any, there we go. Yeah. So we'd entertain, the recommendation is to, no action is required. It's just totally informative and moves on to the next stage.
Right. And I want to again, entertain any questions or comments that anyone has at this point. Otherwise, we'll be back for first reading.
Okay. Questions to Dirk? I don't need to prompt it out of anybody here. We're just, everybody's happy. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Dirk. Appreciate that. Introduction, introduction of ordinances. There are no items this evening and, which brings us to the administrative portion, which is 12.1, Discussion on Possible Action Concerning the Format of City Council/Board and Commission Working Sessions. And I know this was put on the agenda by our new city manager, Jose Madrigal. Jose, can you update us on this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I just wanted to get a little bit more direction based off of our September 22 study session, I believe, when we were talking about these working groups for the city council, board, and commissions. And being my first study session that I was on, I think I probably should have asked for a little more clarification. So I'm going to come back and hope to get some guidance from the council on how to go on with the format of these meetings. Specifically, I have a couple of questions. First is, do we want staff in attendance? Second, will these be minutes agendas posted? And then third, are we looking at the council liaison for the boards? Or are we looking at all of the council? So once I get the direction on these to move forward, be happy to go ahead and get those scheduled and moving forward with the five boards that were identified.
Excellent. So maybe we can pick them off one at a time. You know, the idea of staff, historically, I think we've all been to a number of these previously breakfast meetings, informal in nature. There were no minutes recording. This was a casual breakfast meeting. And all members of council were in attendance to, to relate to that last question. And generally, the liaison kind of caused the discussion to roll out if, to just introduce everybody to the, to that committee. But Jose brought, we've, we've talked internally about the idea of having staff there, the benefits or negatives of having staff in attendance versus having a direct Negatives of having staff in attendance versus having a direct conversation between council. And and members of the board or commission. So with that, I'll open it up to pros and cons that the council thinks. And so we can advise Jose appropriately.
If I if I may, Mayor, just really quickly, and you know, from my perspective, I think it really is up to the council and the purpose. Of the meeting of what the purpose of these of these meetings are, if it is to talk about. Projects, I think that's one thing where staff may need to be in attendance. But I do believe that there's also a want to maybe talk about. Roles of the boards and kind of the feedback that they wanted the council may want to receive from the boards and. And commissions that may not necessarily be about staff and updates. So. Just really want to get clarification of that purpose of the meeting, and I think that will help us dictate on the staff attendance. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, if I if I might just follow up with Jose's comment, you know, I. We have had significant discussion about the role of the boards. And so I think in the next. Round of meetings, if you will, with each of the boards, it seems like there is a purpose to. To talk directly counsel to board members and perhaps without staff at that at that meeting. Given the previous purpose of a lot of these meetings, it was updates of projects. Initially by staff reinforced and discussion by by members of the board or commission in in conversation with council. So. I see both purposes unless we and perhaps we can just phase. The idea of involvement of of staff. And so we have some. Some direct one on one or council council. Member discussion followed by, you know, later. The third or fourth meeting that we have with those councilmen or council members. Board members, excuse me, with council that then we can bring staff back in to further advise some of the topics that would be. We discuss. So I'll quit talking and go around. Kim, do you have some thoughts that you formulated on this?
I think Barbara may have wanted to speak, so I'll.
It did have to follow. I'm happy to go in an order or. So Dean, do you know?
Order, by the way.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you're right. There is no order. I actually agree. I think that they're with you that I think there's real times when. The council and the board should speak candidly and directly. And I think there's real merit in that. My own view is sometimes. Those sessions are so large that I don't actually hear from all of the advisory board members. And so I I'd like to to look at just as we do. You know, I I like to look at it as a board council opportunity to discuss items. And then down the road, it doesn't mean it's forever one way. There there could be opportunities or times. When it is appropriate to invite staff to participate, but that would be a discussion between the the council and the the board.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in on that? Chris, Chris.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. I I think. You know, I'm not interested in attending those meetings if staff's not present. I'd find that conversation can be pretty untethered, the staff or the professional nexus to how the city. Actually operates and, you know, having a meeting where we're just spinning around in circles with various ideas about what should be. Contemplated outside the scope of what's actually happening. I'd really appreciate having the knowledge base of having a staff member at least ask a question to. I think otherwise it'll be a much less productive session. And those sessions are already relatively unproductive. So we made some changes to them and asked for some agendas, which I hope we're going to incorporate. Into that to help that process, but to not have staff members in the room that are actually associated with doing the work of the city. This seems like a waste of time to me.
I I might just throw out the idea too that in to Counselor Noesworthy thought that there's a lot of people in the room. And so a lot of a lot of people get left out of the one hour, two hour and a half conversation is. A compromise might be to have the board chair there as opposed to the entire. Well, excuse me, the the. Just the the head of the department or as opposed to oftentimes we have multiple staff members there. But. You know, I'm willing to hear any, obviously, any any other version of it. My thought was that we could start and have the some limited. One or two meetings with just the board and then invite staff back in as after we've had fruitful discussions regarding the purpose of the board. With with those people, but I agree with with Chris to a high level. I'd I'd agree that. The board brings the top of the the staff brings the topics to the conversation and they inform those those discussions. And we've never had board members that were shy about speaking up historically. And offering their opinions and it's been fruitful discussion in in my history, but. If we will. So I think I do think the the one item that was suggested was an agenda, obviously. Let's do talk about that. Absent any staff members, I think we need at minimum an agenda to. Check off as we as we have. Either our breakfast or our mid afternoon snacks. In in this discussion, how formal of the, you know, that that formalizes the the whole situation a little bit better. And maybe it's more fruitful. Chris alluded to the fact that he didn't think they were particularly fruitful and. Some are, some are not, but we've had some discussions, but oftentimes you go up. It was nice. It was a social gathering more than a. Than a work session for sure. And oftentimes that is. Relationship building was the total total agenda for the day. So I I see merit in that as well. So perhaps Melissa or Kim, if you if you have thoughts one way or the other.
Yeah, I I do. I I think an agenda is a fabulous idea. And I would like to see maybe, I don't know, it's two agenda items brought forward by council and two agenda items brought forward by. Or the commission so that we're talking about what. Council wants to talk about. We're talking about what the boards want to talk about. And I think one of the benefits of having it be a council board discussion is that. The board never actually gets to talk to council. There's a council liaison there, but there's a there's a difference in philosophies about the purpose of that liaison. And also, it's. It isn't really talking to the entire council, and I think that that would be very, very beneficial to do so. I also think it gives counselors a chance to meet the people who are on the boards in a more intimate setting. And even though we're going to have an agenda, I think it's more about the the communication between the two groups. For me personally, I would really like it because it'll help me decide like where do where do I want to be a liaison in my next my next year as a liaison. And gain a better understanding of the board members as individuals. I I think that since they are advisory to the council and they are appointed by council. That it behooves us to have that kind of relationship with them. I know that many of them have asked, they've said, we want to know what council wants us to do. What's our purpose? What's our vision? And I think it would be incredibly hard to. Challenging for council to come up with that solely. I think it needs to be a combination of the council and the and the board or commission to say. Okay, what direction are we going? How do we get there? And, you know, where do we go from here? And if they choose that they don't. Want to meet with council one on one after our first conversation that they are with all of us together that then. If they want to have staff show up, that's fine, too. But I do think we should start the conversation with our advisory boards and commissions. With the council and the board and commission and have staff enter the picture later.
Melissa, you have any thoughts to follow up with that?
I think it's great discussion, first of all. And and getting some clarity around our relationship with. Our advisory boards, I think is going to be really helpful for all of us. I had found in the past the breakfast, though they weren't. They didn't have an agenda. They they were a good opportunity to get to know the advisory board members and to talk about. Various issues that were on on the agenda that they wanted to kind of bring up. So I I. I found them to be helpful, relationship building opportunities, and I do think that we should continue those. So I'm looking forward to kind of getting back into a schedule like we're trying to do right now. I was, Jose, if it's okay with you, I might bring up kind of I I mentioned this idea. I I talked about this with Jose and. You know, was trying to think about various options that might work for council for all of us, such that we can move forward, you know, productively and. And, you know, and within an agreement on on how to move forward here. And one option that Jose actually mentioned and. And or maybe I brought it up, but we we discussed. I I hope I'm not. I don't want to put you on the spot, Jose. I don't mean to, but I thought it was a very good. Idea that he brought up, and I don't want to take credit for it really. So that's why I'm bringing him into this. But he suggested that maybe. The first part of the meeting, the first thirty minutes of the meeting, have have staff present, or if you will, you know, Jose, he's new. It gives him the opportunity to also see how we are relating with these various boards and commissions. And he gets to know people as well as in the community. So I think it would be helpful for him as well. Versus him trying to attend all these meetings on his own. I mean, just obviously, we know that he can't. So. If he could attend potentially the first part of that a meeting with us when we might be talking about. Like the relevant items that we want them to focus on that following year. So potentially, we could have staff president that first half of the meeting and then staff could sign off. And we can just touch base, counsel to advisory board members on how they think it's going, how they think it's working. And we can do with that information what we will. We may ultimately end up communicating that back with staff. But that may be a way to move forward here as a possibility. I thought it was kind of a good idea. It allows for the relationship building. What's that, Dean? Sorry.
The hybrid option. And, you know, the the point you made there particularly with relative to our new city manager, I think it's it is important for. You know, at minimum, him to participate and and be introduced to as many people in the community via this mechanism as possible. So. I kind of like the idea of that, whether that's a staff leaves or staff comes in to answer questions at the end of the. At the end of the session, might be it. The converse methodology there, but a hybrid meeting. I particularly so I think we've all had a chance to go one round. Now this is going to, Kim.
Dean, is that okay? I just speaking to what Melissa and Jose have brought up, I think it's a good idea. I I could support that. And one of my concerns about the meetings is that we ask a lot of staff anyway. We ask a lot of their time. And for them to show up at seven o'clock in the morning or seven thirty and then also do a noon meeting and then do a night. I'm really concerned that in this framework, we may be asking a lot more of them than we should be and taking time away from work that they could be doing. It's much more productive. For a conversation. And so I think the conversation is is good and needed. But I'm not certain that it's a wise use of staff's time. That's one of my major concerns.
Duly noted. I think that's 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 staff is taxed at best right now. Barbara?
And I'll just come in to Melissa and Jose. I think having the city manager there. It makes great sense, you know, and the idea of being there at the beginning. Also, I've been at some of these breakfasts where, yeah, there's three and four staff. And I want to be cognizant of their time as well. So. I would support having Jose at these early meetings and then kind of seeing how they go. And I I remind everyone, these are quarterly meetings. These are not every month. So it really is our touch base time with the advisory boards.
Well, you know, in my mind, I think it's nothing. It needs to be hard and fast forever. You know, I think that we have a need and express desire to. Meet directly with the members of each of the boards in rotation. And if that's if we do a round of that and see how productive it might become and what comes out of that. If the boards enjoy it and there's good productive conversation, it gives us ability to field questions as well as. Talk about the things that we've talked about in our retreats as to how we. How we communicate with the boards and do a specific round of just that kind of communication, then we can see, you know, I would suggest that we we do that. Over the next months to for that first round and then see how it goes if it's. If they turn out to be nonproductive or that we need staff to advise us, then we can always invite them back into the picture and. And without shunning them in any way, you know, I think we need to get work done, whatever it takes to do that best is is what we need to do. But. I see a purpose in one at least one round of of Jose and council and members of the commissions. Be beneficial to have good communication with the members. So is that in? That's that's my thought. We can. We can kind of knock these off. I think minutes of the meeting. Is anybody concerned that there be minutes of this meeting if it?
I think the question is, is are we legally required to have minutes if we have if we're having a publicly announced city council meeting? Quote unquote.
Yes, I just absolutely, Mayor Pro Tim Baxter. I just want to make sure with open records and maybe Dirk, you can help me. Knowing that we would have a quorum, possibly have a quorum of the council, a quorum of the board, would we be required to take minutes? And if so. I just need to make sure that while I'm there, I absolutely can take the minutes. And then if I need to. Transition off that we just have we hand that job off to somebody else to take the minutes. But I just want to make sure I am. We're in compliance with with the laws that we if we have to take minutes that we will.
With that question, I was as as well, Dirk, under that, I would ask if a simple recording might be appropriate. To document it and for posterity. I'm not. I don't have the need probably to have things. In transcribed minutes for further approval. If we have a recording, that would satisfy my needs, but. Dirk, I don't know what the law. We want to be within the law, certainly.
Yeah, we've historically never actually recorded those, and I don't. Amy can chime in. I don't think we've ever prepared minutes. But I would suggest we can take a look at that and see if we do or we don't, and we can report back on that issue.
Well, theoretically, I this is just a question, but theoretically, decisions couldn't be made at those meetings. Is that correct? So we might just the minutes might just in general consist of who was there and and that we had a discussion or something like that. It could be that simple.
Very abbreviated. Yes, that's right.
And we we don't take minutes during our retreats.
We record them, though.
Yes.
Yeah, that's that example. Yeah, good point.
Will we record these? Or is that next?
That would be a question if we would record them and also with the retreat. We stream that meeting the whole time. So so people can listen in and I would. That would be my other question is, do you want us to have it where it's streaming?
If I could ask a question, maybe it's to Dirk and and Dean, because you guys have been on council, you know, around longer. If I recall correctly, some of the reason why we didn't have an agenda in the past is for this reason of the need to. Have minutes and recordings and things like that. I don't know if it's any if if I understood that incorrectly, but if we're going to agendaize. Topics, then I it feels to me like it should follow a normal protocol potentially. Dirk?
Again, those those morning, those breakfast meetings never had an agenda per se. They were posted and so study sessions, again, no decisions can be made. It's effectively like a joint study session is sort of what it amounts to. Agenda could provide some structure. I don't know that the question of whether they have to, you know, be. Formal minutes turns on the question of whether or not there's an agenda. I'll consult with the statute and I can get back with Jose on the details of of that issue.
Thanks, Derek. And, you know, historically, these have been very, very informal. They were just that breakfast meetings for, you know, relaxed environment for to have. Fruitful discussion and team building, basically, and interaction. It was not meant to. There was not a published agenda. I think. You know, I like the other format, but I think this is more productive, obviously, if we can actually accomplish something with the use of time and resources. So. Definitely support. So I'm, I'm, I'm definitely support of a more organized meeting, and I think they will too. I just, I'd hate to see it become a so formal that we, we lose the spontaneity of what occurs in historically in these types of meetings. So.
Well, maybe not called an agenda. Maybe it's just a list of a couple of topics.
Topic, yeah.
And then that way, that way it doesn't become so formal, but we at least get these like four topics discussed that we want to discuss.
The breakfast menu, except it's not anymore. Good. Yeah, I agree. I agree. It, it, in the spirit of camaraderie, that's, that's, that's why it was in the, you know, at a breakfast meeting at a restaurant and, you know, relaxed. So, but so we've, we've talked about who would be in attendance for at least the first round, and then we could start there and then have this discussion again in a, in the next quarter and, and see if we want to have another round or if it's appropriate to have staff in whatever level of attendance be invited back in. And then we would do some informal minutes. And then the last item, Jose, on your list was,
I've got it. All council. Yeah. I think it was already discussed that it's an invitation for all the city councils. So I have that.
If you're buying breakfast, we're all gonna be.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So just to make sure I got it, I'm just going to summarize it really quickly just to make sure, but I think I have it. We'll have topics, two topics from the council, two topics from the boards and commissions. It'll be a, a general minutes. I'll be in attendance for the very beginning, and then if I need a transition off, I will. And we'll go start scheduling these with the five boards that were identified on the twenty, twenty seconds, I believe was that study session. And so if that's, seems to be it, oh.
Question. We had originally had some of these scheduled already. Have those all been canceled and we're redoing the schedule?
The only one that I know, the only one that has been canceled was the one that was supposed to happen before this meeting.
Okay.
So that's the only one that I've said has been canceled. It's the only one that I know that's been canceled.
Okay.
Since we have direction, we'll move forward with those meetings if they've already been.
Just wanted to make sure.
No problem.
And at minimum, I think the, in, in terms of, we'll do this for at least one complete round of our boards and commissions and then, and then regroup and, and see how it went. Have a, have a evaluation of our productivity. All right.
Can I ask real quick? You said complete round. So is that complete with all boards and commissions or one complete round with just the five that we had identified?
Well, five that were identified, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Good point. Good point. All right.
Can you rename those five, please?
Yes, it was the CRC, Community Relations Commission, Salt Fab, Planning and Zoning, Infrastructure and Parks and Recreation.
I would really like to see if multimodal could be on that.
I'd be up for adding multimodal if everybody else agrees.
I, I, I wouldn't see a reason not to. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, yeah, I think we're getting general concurrence that that would be appropriate.
Particularly as we gear up with the, the U R A.
So we went from here to here.
Gotcha.
All right. All right. Well, Jose, thanks for bringing that up and guiding us through that. Next, we, again, twelve point two is the city update on the August sales tax report. So I see Devin on board too. Who's gonna?
Devin will take this one. I'll pass it off for Devin.
Thank you, Jose. Devin, you're on. Whenever you want to be.
Sorry.
Oh, there you are. You went from there to there.
Yes, I am here. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. If it's all right with you all, I'm going to share my screen and I won't take up too much of your time. However, I do have some positive news for the August sales tax report. We are seeing an increase of four, four point two percent for sales tax. And so that is very positive overall. And I did want to throw a disclosure out there too. I know we've been working on revising our sales tax report. And so we'll have that with the month, monthly financials here very soon for August and then following September. So, but for now, I'll go over this report. So wanted to let council and the citizens know that we were up four point two percent for sales tax. We are still seeing some percentages down in use tax and returns and lodgers' tax as well. So you're, you're compared to where we're typically at in the budget, we're eight percent down overall in sales tax, and we're thirty seven percent down in lodgers' tax. So we are seeing some upticks there, which is positive. I think the worst month for lodgers' tax, we were down seventy seven percent. So that is positive that we're seeing that trend in the right direction. Just to provide a little bit additional information here, you can see kind of where folks are spending and where we're getting those sales tax revenues from. So our central business district is thirty two point five, three percent. North Durango is thirteen point three, five percent. Other Durango is four point oh six. Outside city limits is three point one four. Sales tax only is four point four, eight, four. And South Durango is a four point, or forty two point oh nine percent. And then over here, I know this chart's a little tricky to see, but I did want to share this little bit of success here. This is the first time in since really January that we've seen this blue line come up over last year's numbers. So that is positive, that we're going in a good direction there. We're continuing to watch sales tax and our revenues and expenditures to make sure that we are in a good position for those funds that are that, that rely on those revenues. So I won't take up any more of your time, but can I answer any questions from council?
Yeah, Devin, I, I just wanted a clarification down at the bottom.
Sure.
Yeah, in your pie, in your sort of pie chart thing, I just wanted for the public to clarify what, what sales tax only means.
Sure. So I could get some more information for you on that, Kim, and I can add some narratives. When we post this to the website, it's, it's clear to the citizens what sales tax only means. I don't have that information currently right here, but I'd be happy to add some disclosure on there that kind of explains that a little bit further. And I think you, you know, we've been working to revise this so that it's a little clearer and.
Is there a wine item that corresponds to internet sales tax collection?
So internet sales tax collection is typically, the challenge we have with that is it's currently a part of our miscellaneous sales tax. We've been talking about breaking that out so that we can follow that a little bit better and kind of see where that trend analysis is going. But we don't have that information currently broken out on here.
Okay. And when you say miscellaneous, do you mean other? Or what, what's miscellaneous?
So miscellaneous is part of our S I C report. And so in there is kind of, there's, there's several different functions, if you will, of that sales tax that exists in that fund. And I can get you some more information on that. I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I, I, this is fabulous. And I know that you're really busy, so I appreciate that. But I do think that tracking internet sales tax is going to be somewhat important for us, particularly since I'm sure that it's changed because of COVID. And it would be good to know kind of what's going on and how we might be affected as things loosen up more and we become more economically, physically economically, you know, in person economically viable. So.
Absolutely. And on that note, for 2021, we will be using the sales and use tax collection through the state. And so they'll actually be collecting those remote remitter sales tax for us, similarly to how the county does it. But it'll be really interesting to see all of those drivers and what those, how those factors make a difference in our sales tax.
Absolutely. Thank you, Devin.
Thank you.
I have a pretty easy question for you. Can you scroll up to the top of this page, please?
Yes.
So just to clarify, the August numbers, the four point two percent, that is up over previous August, 2019? Is this, is that correct?
That's right. So we have this report where we've been comparing to 2019. And then in our monthly financials, we've been comparing to the estimated budget.
But this is back from 2019, just to confirm, correct?
That's correct.
And then year to date, the negative three point six, we're down compared to the same period of time year to date, 2019, right?
That's correct.
Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you.
That, that's an excellent point. And the four point two is, shows a, a major success story.
Yeah.
In terms of our comeback and our resiliency of our community due largely in part to the COVID measures and the, and the, the level of compliance amongst our businesses and the things that the, the city and bid and, and the COVID response team has done to open up additional seating areas in our restaurants, capacity in our, in our businesses. And that's an amazing number, given what we thought it would be. And what other communities are, are experiencing as well? There's not many communities that can demonstrate more sales tax of this August over what they made last year at the same time. So that's, thank you for pointing that out. So, and that's, that's it, Devin, I guess. Thanks for that great report.
Thank you all. I appreciate the time.
Yeah. That brings us to our last segment of our council meeting, which is council reports and actions. And so I, I just want to start out to say that we, relative to COVID, we are not in a particularly good spot right now. Particularly the, every Monday, we get updates from San Juan Basin Health Department. And we are trending in a not great situation. We're, we're, we're entering back to levels of COVID infection that we're, transmission that we were experiencing in July. Last week, over seven days, we had seventeen new reports, new tests, new positive cases. The interesting thing is that fifteen of those were in La Plata County. And as you know, San Juan Basin Health covers Archuleta County as well. But only of the seventeen, fifteen of those were in our jurisdiction, not Archuleta County. So it means that Durango, Bayfield, we're not doing as well as other places. And, but we are doing better than the state as a whole. But the state as a whole, as you might know from, from all news reports, is, is in, in, in an upward trend as well. And to the extent that they've exceeded the transmiss, the incidence rate is, is in Archuleta County is fifty seven cases per one hundred thousand. And in La Plata County, it's double that. It's one hundred and six point six cases for one hundred thousand members of population. So that one hundred and six point six number, the, the, where you want to be, like when you go to the doctor and you're feeling well, you want to be under twenty five. And we are at a hundred and six point six. So we are four times the incident rate that we should be to feel comfortable about how we are doing in, in the world of transmission of COVID. Relative to positivity rates, we also are increasing. Positivity rates are those positive cases. In La Plata County, we're at three percent. That's up, that's an uptick. And so we would look at these charts and we're also increasing fairly concerned, in, in a, definitely having a concerned situation. So we're at three. City and county of Denver is exceeding five now. They're right around five. That's the level where the governor has said we need to do something different than we, the track that we're on. So we are approaching and we are on a curve to hit that if we don't have a better distancing, more masks, all the, all the things that it takes to bring us back into compliance and bring these numbers down. So that's what I plead to our business owners. We've had some cases demonstrated outbreaks in a number of our favorite restaurants, and they are my favorite restaurants. But if you think of the people that are dealing with COVID every day, those are, number one, our medical, first, first responders in the medical community that have to deal with people with COVID every day. And secondly, it's the bartenders, the waitresses, all those people that we interact with and that we've enjoyed and, you know, going down on Main and enjoying. And those are the people that are being infected by bad behavior. So I just implore us as a community to ignore the, ignore the little statements that have come out in the press lately about noncompliance and that using a mask is worthless. It is what's keeping our economy alive. And so if we want to continue to enjoy the level of activity and these great sales tax revenues and life in general in Durango, especially looking at our ski season and a whole new crop of new individuals coming to our community, we need to mask up. And so that's from Mayor Durango, please mask up. That brings us to Halloween. I, I live on Fourth Avenue. I walked by a couple houses on Third Avenue, and I noticed a couple signs out there that said, "The city of Durango has canceled Halloween." Obviously, somebody that's upset about the fact that we have a pandemic going on and Halloween is maybe not what they expected to be, but the city of Durango officially has not canceled Halloween. If, if we did, it's something that Jose did when I wasn't watching. But clearly, we have not canceled Halloween, no matter what signage you read on Main, on Third Avenue. But there are some measures that have been proposed by San Juan Basin Health regarding Halloween relative to the risk that you might take. And they simply do not recommend the conventional door to door trick or treat scenario that we've experienced since we were kids. So limit your interactions. If you're going to trick or treat, go to people you know. Go to places that have kind of a one way trick or treating or grab and go with goodie bags. Use this, be in a small group. Don't be, have the influx of kids that I normally enjoy on my front porch. That's not going to happen. I'm not going to give out candy this year. I'm going to support other methods of another community, other community events. And so if you'd like to get some information on safe measures of trick or treating, San Juan Basin Health Department has some really good web pages. I won't recite them here, but simply find out what's happening in town via them and, and what you should do and what's reasonable. So you can explain it to your kids about why it's different this year than it was last year, and it will be better soon. So thank you for that. The only other report I have is the airport commission met, and we, airport commission is doing great. Sales are up. The only thing that is down is, is parking lot rental, which is a significant part of the revenue for the airport. However, we did get a pretty sizable stimulus, CARES Act funding that will be dispersed over the next few years, actually, to the tune of about a half a million over the next four or five years as we need it. So that's, that's a good situation in terms of our airport funding. We are looking forward to a major runway repair in 2023, I believe it is. And so the next couple of years are going to be talking about messaging because it will require some methodology of stopping air traffic and that whole conversation about do we shut down the airport in total for a limited number of days? Or do we try to have limited usage of the airport and start and stop it? And all that kind of phasing is topic of discussion as we look towards getting a brand new runway replacement in the next few years. So the funding for that runway is, was a variety of funding sources, but primarily FAA funding, taxpayer dollars, local taxpayer dollars are not at work. So we get it from the government for free, sort of. It's our share of, and we look forward to that improvement being made because it's, it's going to be our key to recovery to get more people in here and tourist traffic as well as business traffic. And so we can accommodate all the new opportunity that the post recovery will offer to the community. With that, who wants to go next? Kim, do you have some thoughts? Mayor Protem?
Oh, I have lots of thoughts, Dean, but I don't need to share them this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And, and thank you for being brief. Former Mayor Youssef.
I have no updates tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Chris, good, good to have you back with us.
Thank you. No updates for me either. Thanks for all of your words on the COVID crisis. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you. And, and Barbara?
I just have one. I attended the special meeting of the multimodal advisory board, which was to look at the C I P plan and.
plan and recommendations. And part of the issue is the planned work on College and Eighth is, coincides with some, I, some of the infrastructure advisory board's recommendation for dealing with that street, so that needs to be postponed, so that's thrown some things off. Also, at that meeting, the board was not really aware of our discussions with the county commissioners on looking at the Thirty Second Street traffic calming and why that was important as we also relate to the county commissioner. So I kind of advised them on that and they reprioritized it to within the five-year period, recognizing that if we could make it happen sooner from allocation of funds, they'd like it, but they weren't quite able to get it to, with their matrix to work within next year's priority or this year's. The other thing is that we'll be having our next meeting tomorrow and I want to make certain that I share with them the discussion with the county on the Thirty Second Street and that potential I G A. So that's kind of my main reports. Oh, and also I will remind people that the next Community Relations Commission meeting will be next week, Wednesday, the twenty eighth.
Excellent, thank you Councilor Nosworthy. Well, with that, that, if there's no further discussion, you know, I'm looking for any further comments and I think that's the, the end of our show, I'd like to adjourn this, this regular meeting of Durango City Council. And I look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.